Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled June 8th meeting of the Geneva Planning and Zoning Commission. I am John Mead, Vice Chairman of the Commission, filling in for Chairman Scott Stocking. Tonight, for the benefit of those in attendance, I am joined by Commissioner Rebecca Holloman, Commissioner Tim Moran, Commissioner Mike Slivka, Commissioner Adam Metaskill, Community Development Director David DeGroot, City Planner Matt Busing, and Assistant Planner Jesse Munsey. Virtual attendees may watch or participate in the live stream meeting by accessing the link provided on the meeting agenda found on the city's website at www.geneva-il.us. For more information about meeting procedures or providing public comment, please see notice regarding meeting and public comment rule modification. This evening, the Commission will host a public hearing for Agenda Items 5A and 5B, followed by a site plan review for Agenda Item 6A. As Chairman of tonight's meeting, I will guide the public applicant and the Commission through our public hearing process, which is outlined on the back of the meeting agenda. Please see this page for further details. The Commission will open the public hearing, and the applicant will provide an opening statement and a brief overview of their requests. Commission members will first have the opportunity to ask questions and make comments. This will be followed by public comment and testimony regarding the requests. Audience members will be called on virtually or in person and given an opportunity to comment. We ask that you state your name and address when it is your turn to speak. If your comment has already been made or your question has already been asked, it is not necessary to repeat it. We remind members of the public to refrain from varying off topic and direct comments that are relevant to the requests being considered. Following the end of the public testimony, the applicant will have an opportunity to provide closing statement and comprehensively answer questions or respond to any of the comments made from members of the public. Additional questions or comments may be stated by the Commission, but public comment will not be reopened. The public hearing may then be closed following -- followed by Commission deliberation on separate quests. Any persons speaking during the public hearing agree and understand that anything they say will be considered sworn testimony and affirmed to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. As a friendly reminder, Agenda Item 6A does not require a public hearing. However, members of the public wishing to make comments or ask questions regarding this, this item may do so during the public comment portion of the meeting at Agenda Item 7. In order to help with the quality of the meeting broadcast, I would remind all Commissioners to mute themselves except when they are addressing the Commission. Commissioners are also encouraged to state their name prior to speaking and providing a roll call vote to better assist our record keepers. For example, "Meed," "I," "Nay," or "Abstain." Anna, would you please call the roll?
Meed.
Here.
Evans. Slivka.
Slivka, here.
Holloman.
Holloman, here.
Metaskill.
Metaskill, here.
Moran.
Moran, here.
Stocking.
Good. We have a quorum, so we will proceed. The next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Note that Commissioner Evans has joined the hearings this evening.
Move to approve the agenda. Slivka.
Holloman, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, approve. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the April 13th meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Any changes or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes from the April 13th, 2023 meeting. Slivka.
Metaskill, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved. We now move to Item 5 on the agenda, which are the public hearings. The first item, 5, before I do that, maybe I should read the procedure for the public hearing. Okay? Okay. All those that picked up an agenda have a copy of the procedure for public hearing, so what we'll do is now ask anyone who is going to speak this evening to please stand and raise your right hand.
Please, now, please, read the testimony you are asking, shall be truthful, do you want to?
Thank you. All right. Item 5A, 602 Maple Lane Variation. This is a request for a variation from Section 11-5C-4 of the Geneva zoning ordinance to allow a street yard setback of 22.32 feet instead of the required 35 feet for a proposed addition. Location is at 602 Maple Lane, and the applicants are Catherine and Ted Hemming, the owners of the property. Now, staff will have -- do you have anything to read into the record?
Yes. So, the contents of this file include an application for a variation filed by Catherine and Ted Hemming dated April 19th, 2023, including the following items: a project narrative, response to variation standards, a platyp survey dated April 7th, 2023, a lot development plan, a proposed floor plan, supporting documents, a list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, an affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on May 24th, 2023, for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated June 8th, 2023.
Thank you, Matt. At this time, would the applicant like to make a presentation or initial comment?
Good evening. My name is Sean Gallagher. I live at 427 Anderson Boulevard in Geneva. I am a local architect, and I have the honor of representing Katie and Ted Hemming this evening to you all. I'm going to frame the project, or I'm going to frame the project, the problem, and our proposal, and then we'll talk through the four standards for variation. So, the project, you all have that in front of you, at least the narrative. The owners wish to add a primary bedroom suite to the house. So, that's the project, if you will, a primary bedroom suite. The problem for us is that the property actually has its true front yard on center. The house is at the corner of Center and Maple, and the way the zoning lays out is the narrower of those two dimensions is the primary street front. Well, that primary street front is governed by the neighbor to the west, which is at 603 Willow. That house sits 35 feet from its property line, which then establishes our front yard, and that's where we run into a little bit of a hiccup, because where that setback line is, it actually bisects the house, two of the bedrooms currently. So, that now primary street front sits several feet into the existing house. And the addition that we are proposing, so our proposal wants to actually sit in the area where the bedroom makes the most sense. So, if you're looking at any of the floor plans, there is, to the north of that house are all the public spaces, the kitchen, the family room, the main entry, a little breakfast area. As you head farther south, that's where all the bedrooms are. So, the location of this new primary bedroom suite lands at the south end of the house, which ends up being in that street front setback. Now, the standards for variation, starting with the reasonable return, I had shared with you some information specifically relating to ranch houses. And as you know, and as I'm experiencing myself, now 55, you know, single-story houses are very popular, and that neighborhood is very popular as far as ranch homes. Our proposal will actually provide a ranch-style addition. So, whatever we're doing is going to actually be sympathetic to the existing house. But that reasonable return, when you look at the size of the existing bedrooms, some of them are so small that, for practical purposes, they don't really serve well as a bedroom. So, the need for a larger primary suite, especially in light of the opportunity for aging in place, so I did also send some articles or included some articles that talked to that as well. Obviously, with the ranch-style house and with this addition, we can increase some of the births around the spaces. So, we can get a wheelchair into spaces, we can get into a larger bedroom, we can get into a larger primary bathroom suite as well, with curbless shower and the like. We're actually occupying one of the bedrooms just for the bathroom itself. So, that speaks to reasonable return. The unique hardship is that, the way the house was originally oriented, it was oriented towards Maple. So, they were using the south side of that property as a side yard, right? So, and of course, it was set up or built prior to the zoning requirements that would have prohibited that. So, we're kind of saddled with that issue, right? So, we're working within that constraint. The character of the area, as I mentioned, one little aside, which is interesting. So, in theory, based on City of Geneva's standards, we could actually build above the non-conforming component without needing a variance. So, this house right now is about 17 feet tall at its highest, real modest height, right? We're going to maintain that height. We're not going to get any taller than the existing house. We could, in theory, go to 35 feet, right? So, we could add above without asking for a variance in the setback, because that's allowed by zoning standards. So, from our end, we're trying to be sympathetic to the existing house by maintaining the ranch. And then, to the issue of minimum variance, we are not any closer to the center street front than the existing house. In fact, what we've done is we've set it back. We've broken the line of the existing house. It's kind of a common way of dealing with an existing structure, to respect the existing building. We've offset or backset the primary bedroom closet about 2 and 1/2 feet back, and then we jog forward by about a foot. So, technically, we're about a foot and 1/2 behind the main line of the house as it faces Center Street. So, we're trying to be respectful to that, as well as we're also trying to stitch the addition in so that we can actually get to it without getting into the public spaces to the north, which includes the breakfast room and that sort of thing. So, again, bedrooms are currently located to the south. Logically, that's where we're going to place the primary bedroom suite so that it works as kind of an isolated private zone in the project. So, that's our proposal, and of course, the problem and the project. So, if you have questions or any want to bounce some things off, we'd be happy to entertain any of your feedback.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, any comments or questions?
Just have a question. So, there's an ornamental fence to the south. What happens to that with the addition? Currently, it returns to the back of the house now?
Right. Yeah. So, probably what's going to happen is that fence will migrate a little bit to the back or to the north of the addition a little bit, but it will be maintained.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mib?
What are your landscaping plans for that front yard that's a side yard?
Sure. I could have the owners speak to that. At this point, this is still in the kind of development stage, but no doubt there will be landscaping. Beyond that, whether it's a hosta or a arbivida or whatever other thing, I--
Maple tree, perhaps.
Oh, being on maple.
Maple Avenue.
So, unfortunately, we don't have that for you.
Tim?
I live a couple blocks from here. I walk past it all the time. I also live on a corner and am sympathetic to the unusual circumstance where even though your address is on one side, the rest of life goes on on the other side. And I do understand not wanting to put a second story on doesn't really work well for aging in place, having to start climbing stairs. So, I know the area well. It's not going to be out of the ordinary in that neighborhood, and I like this plan.
Thank you.
Anyone else? The only question that I had was related to the height and how it's going to tie into the house, and you've answered that by saying you're going to maintain that height. I assume that the roof will slope towards Center Street because of the, it's turning 90 degrees, so.
Exactly right. Yeah. In fact, because of the slightly hyphenated closet connector, we can break the roof line a little bit, and so that's going to allow us to do that.
Make it a little more interesting architecturally.
Exactly.
Okay.
Break it up.
Okay. Any other comments from the Commission? Okay. At this time, we would entertain any comments from the public, those present in the room? Seeing none, anyone online today?
There is someone online.
Okay. Do we want to? No hand raised, or?
I don't know if you want to.
If the person that's online, if they would like to ask a question or make a comment regarding to this Agenda Item 5A, please raise your hand on the raise hand function on the virtual meeting. Give them a second. Any other discussion or entertain anything?
Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate at this time, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Evans.
Okay. Anna, would you call the vote?
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Metaskill.
Metaskill, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
Okay. Public hearing is closed. At this time, do we have further discussion, or is there a motion?
Prepared to make a motion?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to allow a variation for a street yard setback of 22.32 feet instead of the required 35 feet for the home located at 602 Maple Lane.
Slivka, second.
All right. Thank you. Anna, would you call the vote?
Meed.
Aye.
Evans.
Aye.
Slivka.
Slivka, aye.
Holloman.
Holloman, aye.
Metaskill.
Metaskill, aye.
Moran.
Moran, aye.
All right. That passes unanimously.
So, this will go to City Council, June 19th? So, I'll send a confirmation to you guys, but yeah, prepare, June 19th, same time, 7:00 PM, same location.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Okay. At this time, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5B, which is Isaac's Upholstery Parking Lot Expansion. This is a request for two variations from Section 11-6F-4 of the Geneva zoning ordinance to reduce the required street yard setback from 20 feet to 1.4 feet, and the side yard setback from 5 feet to 0.5 feet to accommodate a proposed parking lot. The applicant is also requesting relief from Section 11-6E-4F to allow a deviation to the parking lot lighting standards in the East State Street corridor design guidelines. Property is located at 830 East State Street, and the applicant is Yvette Cortez of Isaac's Upholstery. Matt, do you have anything to read into the record?
Yes. So, the contents of this file include an application for a variation filed by Yvette Cortez dated October 26, 2022. It includes the following items: project narrative, response to variation standards, platyp survey dated September 20th, 2022, a site plan, grading and demolition plan, a landscape plan, a lighting and photometric plan, list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, an affidavit attesting to the accuracy of the list of property owners within 500 feet of the subject property, a copy of the letter to all property owners within 500 feet, providing notice of the application being filed, a certificate of publication from the Daily Herald for the legal notice that was published on May 24th, 2023, for tonight's public hearing, a copy of the public hearing notice mailed to all property owners within 500 feet, and a staff report from the Community Development Department to the Planning and Zoning Commission dated June 8th, 2023.
Great. Thank you, Matt. At this time, would the applicant like to make an initial statement?
Hello. Good evening.
Hello.
First one, thank you guys for allowing us to bring this project to the city and hearing us out. Really, overall, the project is to get our parking lot paved. We've been trying to get this done for a long time. Obviously, as a business owner and being in the Geneva area for 23 years now, it's really important to us. We've established a great business, great reputation. The outside of the building, we're trying to make improvements along with the inside. So, the parking lot really just is the last thing. And to be honest, in the wintertime, it's very difficult to plow gravel. So, we have asked for the variations in the setback, just to accommodate the parking spot all to the back of the building. Currently, our current customers pull up to the side of the building, which is what the west side of the building, and so we're going to give that up to put all the parking in the back. And then, the other thing was the relief for the lights in the back. We were having a difficult time getting the globe fixtures, especially a couple of years ago, we were looking for them, they were just hard to get. And since the parking is going to be all in the back of the building, we figured if we could just keep it simple, to be able to move the project along.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, do any of the Commissioners have any comments or questions? Commissioner Moran?
Just a quick question. Is my understanding--
Tim, you just turned off your mic, sorry.
Most people appreciate when I turn off. Just from the notes, is my understanding that parking lot expansion is not just for the current business, but that at some point in the future, you hope and expect to be able to lease out some of the properties so the parking won't be needed for other businesses?
That's correct. Yep. It's a pretty big building. After COVID happened, and we kind of restructured our business, we figured we don't need so much space, so might as well open up a section of it to rent out to another retail business to come in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Actually, I have a question to staff. What would be the number of parking spaces required for this building?
So, the parking is based off of the square footage--
Right.
--of the gross floor area of the space. I believe for this site, it is around 16 spaces, and I think they're providing 19.
Yeah. So, they're over what they need to. Okay. Thank you. And my other question was, I didn't see a picture of the light fixture that you want to use instead.
It should be on the plan.
It's in the plan.
Is it in the plan? I was looking--
On the first page.
The first page. Let me go up and take a look.
But that's the standard model.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's just--
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
To that same question, a picture of what it's supposed to be, is that, or the acorn, what was it called?
Yeah. So, the East State Street guidelines call for acorn style lights--
Yeah.
--or acorn, yeah. This is more, I think the term is like a cobra style light, for sure. The acorn style lights are more kind of with a globe shape.
Kind of, yeah, yeah. Okay. That's what I thought. So, in that case, this doesn't seem, I mean, they're in back, so it's not like it's a big deal, but they don't, just for the sake of precedent, they don't seem very similar, like you found something that was almost the same. They look to me like they're quite different in style.
Sure, sure. This is Patrick, he's part of our--
I'm the civil engineer. I was working with Jaten True at the city and to try and find the lights that is in the state-- the-- the--
Guidelines.
They're just guidelines. Okay. We couldn't find them. We tried the manufacturer, doesn't exist anymore, that is specked out in the guidelines. He directed me to another lighting supplier down in St. Louis, and they couldn't find anything like it. So, we were just trying, basically, if you could find something, we couldn't find something that matched. A lot of the lighting manufacturers are going away from that style, the decorative acorn-type style, and going towards the more LED light style. And so, that's what it was, is we couldn't find it, and that's why we're requesting the variation.
Thank you.
Just a couple--
Yeah.
So, if that's the case, going forward, does the city have some other standard to recommend, or what will happen with the lighting?
We are looking at that right now, because we've come across this ourselves, trying to locate these lights. We've reached out to a manufacturer to help us see if we can find a spec that's similar to what's shown in the guidelines, and are just kind of still working through that today. So, we're taking a closer look at this, because a lot of manufacturers are kind of discontinuing the acorn style or the globe style, and with the kind of dark skies initiative that you hear about--
Yeah.
--that downcast lighting is really kind of what's being pushed for. So, we may need to look at those guidelines and revise them if we can't find a spec to kind of--
Would that come before us, or is that something that doesn't come to the Commission?
It would, because it is in the zoning ordinance, so it would come before the--
And then, just wondering if, in your process of doing that, maybe come up with a couple alternatives for East State Street that either/or, in case one goes out of production, we still have an alternative.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Holloman?
So, I'm just looking at the first page here. So, you said that this accounts for 19 spots, and then the requirement is, you said, 16? So, it's not very much of a setback with less than a foot? So, if you got rid of a couple of those first spots?
Those first spots are the handicap spots.
Okay. But maybe just push them back a little bit?
Then--
Then, does that--
We could potentially get rid of one of the spots there. Now, is that 16 based on office space on, or what type of use?
Yeah. So, it's based on the retail gross floor area.
Okay. So, but if, say, an office space goes into that rental area--
Yeah. Because the building is--
You're--
Yeah. Sorry. Because there's a couple parts in the building, too, so there's, it's a large building. So, eventually, the goal was to do a retail space in the front, and then there's a house side, which is like the older part of the building, and we were eventually planning on turning, renting that out to like office spaces. So, really, because of we're trying to do a multi-unit property, we were really trying to maximize the parking spaces for that reason.
Okay. Yeah. I was just thinking, if you took off those first two that were right on the street there, then you'd still have, you know, more than 16, you still have 17 spots. I can't add, sorry. But, and I don't know how much those would be used anyway. Like, it's a pretty tight turn to get in. It looks like it is. It would be a pretty tight turn to get into one of those. The handicap would be accessible, but I don't know. I was just thinking of, like, you know, a way to--
Right there, Mib.
--increase that setback just a little bit.
It's an interesting area of town, and a lot of the side street parkings kind of come right out to the curb, you know, whether it's the funeral home or--
That's how the parking used to be, is they just pulled right in off a Simpson, right into the, right, and parked right on, basically, where the sidewalk is going, where the city's building a sidewalk, they would park there, and so we were just trying to get everything back.
And if we can just make a quick amendment to what we said, it looks like, actually, based on the building size, it looks like the number of spaces would be 18 that would be required, not 16.
If you take--
I apologize.
It comes out to 17.36, and you round up, so it's really 18 spaces that would be required?
I'm wondering if, because the handicap spot is the first space coming in, but the striped portion where no car parks but where a wheelchair would come out, looks to be that first space, is that--
Yes.
So, really, a vehicle won't be parking up against the sidewalk, and that would just be for access to the vehicle. So, if we, if they thought about that in their design, that might address your comment a little bit, I think, so. And just before we move on--
You want my name?
Your name and address, so that our reporter has that.
I, Patrick Sharkey. I'm with Shuffle Engineers, and our address is 18--
I, Patrick Sharkey, I'm with Shuffle Engineers, and our address is 1814 Grantstown Place in Elgin, 60123. Oh, yes.
And just for clarification, so there's a sidewalk on the north side of the building existing along State, and this, this looks like there'll be a sidewalk extending down to the multifamily property line, right?
Correct.
On your, on your west side?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. And then, I guess, sorry, there'll be curbs, curbs along the blacktop?
Yes.
So there'll be, okay.
Yes.
And new lawn where the gravel is to the west as well? Okay, thank you.
And the handicap ramp along the side of the building.
Oh, okay. Anything else? Commissioner Moran?
Yeah, I'm not terribly concerned about the setback issue. What I like about the plan is they're taking what has amounted to an improvised gravel lot, which has basically built itself over the years, paving it, putting in landscaping, marking off designated disabled spots, getting it ready for future other commercial uses. And I think, I think that's, that's a vast improvement.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the comment to the public, either in person. So we have one gentleman, if you'd like to say anything? No, anybody online?
Doesn't look like it.
No one is online, so. Commissioner Moran?
If it's appropriate at this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, Evans.
Okay, thank you. Anna, would you take the vote?
Mead?
Aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slavka?
Slavka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Matoskill?
Matoskill, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
All right, thank you. That passes. Any further discussion or consideration of a motion? Commissioner Moran?
Mr. Chairman, if it's appropriate at this time, I would make a motion to approve the request for two variations from Section 11-6F-4 to reduce the required street yard setback from 20 feet to 1.4 feet, and the required side yard setback from five feet to .5 feet for a proposed parking lot, as well as relief from Section 11-6E-4F to allow deviation from the parking lot lighting standards in the East State Street Corridor Design Guidelines, subject to the finding of facts of city staff. Thank you.
Second, Evans.
Thank you. Commissioner Evans? All right, Anna, would you take the vote?
Mead?
Aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slavka?
Slavka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Matoskill?
Matoskill, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
All right. The motion passes.
So this will also go before the City Council on June 19th, 7:00 PM, same location.
Okay.
Okay. We're going to move to Agenda Item 6, which is a site plan review for the same subject property. This is a request for the site plan review for the proposed parking lot. This does not require a public hearing, but later on in the agenda under Item 7, public may comment. At this time, does the commission have any additional comments or questions for the applicant on the site plan?
No, I agree, this is an upgrade for the property, an upgrade for the neighborhood, and the addition of the new landscaping on the west side there improves the streetscape. Looks like a good project.
Thank you. And I would agree, I like moving the parking to the back, having it disciplined within a curbed paved lot versus kind of the free-for-all that it is now. So you'll have a defined ingress and egress point, and from State Street with the west side landscaping, I think the property just becomes overall more attractive, so. And that will help with potentially leasing it to a tenant. If there's no further discussion, I think, I'm sorry, Commissioner Slavka?
No, I was just gonna say that, I think the paved blacktop will be a big improvement to the bright white gravel.
Yes. Exactly. Thank you. Anything else? All right. At this time, would anybody like to entertain a motion for approval of the site plan?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve the site plan as presented here this evening with the documentations, subject to finding of facts and any conditions attached thereto by city staff.
Thank you.
Second, Evans.
Thank you, Mib. Anna, would you call the vote?
Mead?
Aye.
Evans?
Evans, aye.
Slavka?
Slavka, aye.
Holloman?
Holloman, aye.
Matoskill?
Matoskill, aye.
Moran?
Moran, aye.
Well, thank you. And that, it passes, and does this go before City Council as well?
Yeah, this will also go before City Council. I'll send a confirmation next, early next week, just confirming the date and time.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay, at this time, we move on to the Item 7 on the agenda, which is the public comment portion of the evening. So if there's any public comment, I'm guessing there's none because there's no public, and no one online. Okay, other business? I'll turn to staff.
Yeah, so we've got a couple items here. First, I just want to do a formal introduction of our new assistant planner, Jessie Munsey. This is her first meeting with us, she's been with us for a couple weeks.
Hey, Jessie, welcome.
We're very excited to have her on staff, helping us out a lot already, so it's good to have her here. Item number two, I just want to remind the commission that there is an employee and commission appreciation event at the Cougars game on Thursday, June 29th. It's at 6:30. So if any commissioner would like to attend, there are tickets for you all. Bless you.
Bless you.
And then, if, I think you can RSVP to our HR manager, or you can just RSVP to me, and we can get that all sorted out for you guys. And then, last item on, for me, just, it looks like we should have a meeting on the June 22nd, scheduled meeting. We've got one concept review right now, and then we got some other projects kind of, again, coming down the pipeline, so just be on the lookout for those. We should have some more meetings, you know, kind of regularly scheduled coming up in the future.
Okay.
Will that be during Swedish days, the June 22nd meeting? Yeah, I think it will be.
Is that Swedish?
Yeah.
Yep.
Good luck parking.
Our show starts again, doesn't it?
Parking the staff assigned, assigned spots, I guess.
We'll rope it off.
Right.
And that, that's all I have.
Okay. What happened on the things we talked about last meeting? Did any of that go to City Council?
Yes, so both, I believe we had two items. We had, we had the General Mills project that got approved by City Council, and then we also had another variation, the deck variation in the front. Yes, that also got, got approved.
Yes, the dorch.
And it was completed today. Was it? Oh, really? Awesome. Oh, wonderful.
Very cool, very cool.
Good.
Okay.
Oh, there you go.
Oh, good, good.
What's going on with the mill race in? They went back to historic preservation?
So the public hearing was continued again to June 20th, so it'll continue.
Keep going.
There's a sign on the building that says for sale for a dollar?
If you move it, just for the-
If you move it, are you able, are you able to move it?
That's the question.
Okay. I got the dollar, but I don't-
My dad lives in the deep south suburbs of Crestwood, and he called me, he said there was a huge article in the Tribune about this.
Really? Today's Tribune?
I'm sorry.
Today's?
Last week's.
Yeah, it was added to Landmarks Illinois's list of endangered buildings, and there was kind of a press release about, there were 10 buildings that were endangered, and this is one of them.
Can you move the building? We're getting off topic, but I just-
I can't answer that.
If someone paid a dollar and put it out at Peck Farm, and it became part of the overall history of Geneva-
I don't think, without dismantling it first, I think you'd have to dismantle it-
Marking the bricks.
Yeah.
Interesting. Thanks.
Rebecca? A while ago, we had a meeting about the tattoo place.
Yeah, yeah.
Lovely work.
Hey, there you go.
Lovely work.
And they seem, they see their lights on, look, the space looks good, and-
Did you get the Geneva seal? I didn't get to see it.
It's in an unmentioned room.
I thought you got a Geneva seal on your arm.
Just show you what's proper.
It's right. Awesome.
Nothing else?
Nothing else.
Move to adjourn.
Thank you.